If everyone will take their seats, we'll get started. Greetings, everyone. You look really beautiful out there. I would like to welcome everyone in our city council chambers to tonight's very, very special meeting, as well as our viewers on cable channel 22 and our YouTube channel. I would also like to acknowledge current and former elected officials who are here tonight. If you can, please stand. Any current or former elected officials, please, if you can stand, thank you. Thank you for your service and thank you for being here. We will now have our invocation delivered by Pastor Deverell Hubbard, who is the pastor of St. Paul Baptist Church.
May we bow together. First of all, Father, we are so thankful for all of your bountiful blessings upon us as a community and as a city. We give thanks tonight for our mayor, for our city council, those who have served and those who will serve. We give thanks for this community and the bountiful resources that you have blessed us with. We pray that you would smile upon this evening and that you would remind all of us of the privilege of being able to serve. Bless our city leaders to serve with humility, with compassion, with wisdom and with insight, so that the city of Peoria would be a place where everyone who lives here would thrive here and others would desire to be here because of all of the wonderful things that we are doing. So we surrender this night to you and we look forward to the evening. Have your way, we pray, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Everyone, please join me and stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
We are at the roll call. Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel.
Present.
And Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And Madam Clerk.
We are at regular business and we have a couple of items. Twenty-three dash one five three is a communication from the Mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
May I move by Councilmember Ruckregel, seconded by Councilmember Allen? Any comments? We have legal counsel, Council Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to indicate that the present declaration by the governor is scheduled to end on May 11th and you can add that to the documents that have been provided in your agenda packet and that's been adjusted on your declaration as well. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Council Hayes. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-three dash one fifty-four is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to receive and file the month ended March 31, 2023, an audited financial report.
Moved for approval by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-three dash one fifty-five is the official canvas results of the consolidated general election for the city of Peoria held on April 4th, 2023 with request to receive and file.
Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at presentations to and remarks by retiring elected officials and Madam Mayor, if you would mind coming down to the podium, please.
It is my honor to recognize two civil servants that have served on our Peoria City Council for a rather significant amount of time. That first civil servant is Councilmember Beth Jensen. Would you come forward, please? I'm going to read the resolution and we have it here in a plaque. The writing is a little small, I think I'll rely on the notes. Resolution, City of Peoria, Illinois, Beth Jensen. Whereas Beth Jensen has served as council member for the city of Peoria, Illinois from September 3rd, 2013 to May 2nd, 2023. And this year brings an end to nearly 10 years of unwavering dedication to public service and her deep involvement in the community, during which she has given freely of her time in an unselfish effort and has demonstrated the highest ideals of public service by her dedication. And whereas Beth Jensen, by her years of efficient service as a council member representing the residents of Peoria, has served as a member of the Greater Peoria Mass Transit District Board of Trustees, the Land Bank Board and the Committee to Diversify Police and Fire Personnel. She was very active throughout the community and with many organizations and her dedication to the community and its citizens was insurmountable. Now therefore, be it resolved that this city council, on behalf of its members, the officials and the employees of the city of Peoria and the citizens of the community do hereby express to Beth Jensen a sincere and profound appreciation and thanks for her years of dedicated service as a Peoria City Council member. Be it further resolved, the honorable Beth Jensen be presented this resolution and this resolution be spread upon the permanent record of the city of Peoria, Illinois, attested by the city clerk, passed by the city council of Peoria, Illinois, this second day of May, 2023. I want to thank Councilwoman Jensen for also serving as Mayor Pro Tim and I have a little gift that I also like to present to her, remembering City Hall.
I'm already crying, that's not a good sign. Hang on one sec, okay. Good evening, Mayor Ali, fellow council members, councilmembers-elect, Clerk Tarr, Deputy Clerk Co., City Manager Urick, Corporation Counsel Hayes, citizens of Peoria, my family and friends. Not a good sign. It's been the honor of my life to serve on the Peoria City Council for the last 10 years. I am humbled and honored to have been appointed by Mayor Jim Artis and the city council in 2013 and then to have been elected by the citizens of Peoria in 2015 and 2019. Serving as your city councilperson has been the best and most rewarding job other than, of course, raising my two boys, which technically is not a job. I've worked hard to ensure that this city council does its business in an open and transparent manner, discussing things in public and making its decisions on this floor, asking tough questions, debating and letting the public hear how we are deliberating and why we're making the decisions we're making. I've been a strong, independent voice for all, advocating for all stakeholders to ensure that their concerns and voices are heard before we make final decisions. I've pushed to make sure the city provides meaningful opportunity to the public to provide input before we have discussions and make decisions that are going to affect them. I've pushed to have those meaningful opportunities before we make decisions on the budget, new developments, big road projects, changes or new policies or ordinances that we adopted. I was a big advocate for all neighborhoods and especially older neighborhoods, knowing how important it is for our older neighborhoods to be strong and thriving in order for the entire city to succeed and to be strong. I fought hard for public safety, fighting for the city's firefighters and police, men and women, fighting against job cuts, trying to come up with alternative revenue sources, fighting the closure of fire engines and fire stations. I've been a strong advocate for the arts. As the arts liaison, I made sure that this council knew what was going on in the arts community and so did the public and understood how important that also is to a strong, thriving, growing city. I've been a strong advocate for the environment, making sure we consider environmental concerns as we make decisions. I'm proud that I had a role in getting this city to become the first city to adopt 100% green solution to the CSO problem. I want to take a few minutes just for some thank yous. First and foremost, of course, I'd like to thank my husband Dave for his love and support for all my years on this council and before. It was Dave who actually saw the job posting down on the second floor in the legal department 28 years ago for an Assistant Corporation Counsel in the city of Peoria. He said, "You've got to come and apply for that job. You would love the city of Peoria and Glenn Collier, who was Corporation Counsel at that time and who's here tonight." Thank you, Dave, for reminding me throughout the campaigns that perfect is the enemy of good. That's become our mantra and I pass that on to many other working mothers who can't figure out how to get everything done. It doesn't have to be perfect. Anyway, I wouldn't have been able to do any of this without you, Dave. I love you and I thank you. I also want to thank our boys, William and Charlie, who, believe it or not, were 10 and 11 when I first got appointed to this council. Of course, they're not here tonight, they're now 19 and 21 and in the middle of finals away at school and out of town. But I thank them for letting me drag them to community meetings, city meetings, for going door to door during campaigns from January to April in 2015 and 2019, for learning how to boil water and make pasta dinners so we could all eat together at the end of a night where I had a meeting or a candidate's forum or some other function. I thank them too for learning how to phone bank and text bank and attending forums and providing me political strategy. I love you both and I wish you were here, but I thank you. I also want to thank my mom, who was at my first two swearing-ins but couldn't be here tonight. She's a retired public health nurse and also a retired trustee of the Village of the Board of Arlington Heights. And some of you, I think, know, but many of you don't, my mom was instrumental in figuring out the Tylenol poisoning case and what the cause of it was. So as, and that was in 1982 and I was in middle school and as a role model, I learned from that and she taught me to listen to people, to stick to your guns, follow your gut and speak up. So I thank you, Mom. I wouldn't be here if it weren't for you either. I'd like to take a minute to thank Senator Dave Kaler, who cannot be here tonight, for texting me early one morning in August of 2013 and asked me if I would consider putting my name in for the council vacancy left by Gary Sandberg and for encouraging me to put my name in and advocating for my appointment. I'd also like to thank Jim Hart Artis, who's here tonight, first for responding when I called that morning after talking to Dave Kaler and told him I was thinking about putting my name in for city council and he responded by saying, "That's the best news I've heard all day." I thank you, Jim, for supporting me and appointing me to this city council. It was courageous and nonpartisan at a time when partisan politics, especially locally, were heating up. I know we didn't always agree or see eye to eye and I certainly may have pushed, raising my hand and saying, "Wait a minute, I have a question." Maybe more times than you wanted me to do that. But I always respected you, I'm grateful to have had that appointment and I know you love this city and the city council. The city of Peoria is a stronger and better city because of you. Along with Jim, I'd also like to thank Councilman Chuck Grab and Councilman Tim Regenbach, who both were on the city council in 2013, the only other two left when I was appointed, for your support from the beginning when I put my name in and for our 10 years together around this horseshoe, working for, fighting for older neighborhoods and just serving the city of Peoria together, it's been an honor. I want to thank all my friends who worked so hard on my campaigns, some of who are here tonight, I see you in the back there. I thank you for all your work and all your support for helping me be here to serve the citizens of Peoria. I want to thank my current council members and of course, Mayor Rita Ali, oh, she's over here. It's been an honor to serve with each and every one of you and I mean that truly. These past two years have been interesting but good for the last two years and I look forward to seeing all the good things that you all will do. The city of Peoria and City Hall has always been and will always have a special place in my heart. From the moment I walked into City Hall in December 1994, up those marble stairs as a young attorney from Chicago, interviewing for the position of Assistant Corporation Counsel, I knew this was a special place, not just the building, which it is, but because of the people. The staff here then and now has always been second to none, as Councilman Grab is fond of saying. They care then and they do now deeply about Peoria and serving its citizens and making this city a better place. Thank you, Manager Patrick Urick and all your staff for all you do each and every day for the citizens of Peoria and for your support throughout my tenure on the city council. Thank you. I want to thank Glenn Collier, who's here tonight and who was Corporation Counsel when I was hired in 1995. You've been a longtime mentor and friend and your support of you and Christie throughout the years has meant the world to me. Thank you for being here. I wouldn't be on this council without your mentorship and your friendship. I want to wish the best of luck to the two councilmembers-elect, Bernice Gordon Young and Mike Vespa. I know you two have served the city well and I believe you both carry some of my attributes that will be missing once I leave. I'm looking forward to hearing Bernice, who I think is also an independent, strong voice, speak up, ask tough questions and stand up for the older neighborhoods. And I'm expecting Mike Vespa, who's also an attorney and will be the only one around this horseshoe to use his wisdom and legal experience to ask the important questions and to look at the details and to give this council the legal perspective that it needs. Our son Charlie keeps telling me that tonight is the end of an era. I disagree, it's not the end of an era, but just the beginning. I believe I've paved the way for that era to continue. To make, I think the tough questions will be asked on this council floor, there will be more discussion and debate and decision-making happening here around this horseshoe in the public rather than behind closed doors. I believe there will continue to be opportunities for meaningful public input prior to decisions that maybe wasn't always occurring before I got on the council. I believe there are members here, especially Councilman Grab and Regenbach, who will be advocating for older neighborhoods and I know all of you will work with the staff to achieve your goals. This is not goodbye, I will still be involved and I will still be a voice and I promise I will still speak up. And who knows, if need be, I may be coming here and holding your feet to the fire. Thank you.
Congratulations. The other resolution. It's not here. It's not here. Bear with us, please, thank you. Well, I'm going to stall here and ask that our, I want to recognize our elected officials by name. I see former councilmember Gail Thetford, if you would stand. What, she served on the city council for at-large? Nope? Okay, okay.
1997 through 2005.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. I don't want to jump all the way to the back. I'm trying to remember who stood up. Mayor Artis, Jim Artis, will you stand up, please? Thank you. Treasurer Stephen Morris. Park District Alex Sierra. Park District Joyce Harant. Representative Leach is here. Representative David Leach. And other elected officials who I didn't, oh, where's, where's County Board Member Linda Daly? Would you stand? Former Chair of the County Board, Mr. Andrew Rand. Are there any other current or former elected officials? Mr. Joe Vespa, Judge. Would you stand up, Mr. Joe, Judge Joe Vespa? Two judges in the Vespa family. At this time, I want to recognize another leader who's served our council and our community so very well. Councilmember Sid Ruckregal, please join me. Resolution, City of Peoria, Illinois, Sid P. Ruckregal. Whereas Sid P. Ruckregal has served as City Council Member for the City of Peoria, Illinois from November 24, 2015, to May 2, 2023, and this year brings an end, brings to an end over seven years of dedicated service by Sid Ruckregal to the city of Peoria, during which he has given freely of his time in an unselfish effort and has demonstrated the highest ideas of public service by his dedication. Whereas Sid P. Ruckregal, by his years of efficient service as a council member representing the residents of Peoria, has served as a member of the Peoria Public Library Board, the Downtown Development Corporation, Civic Center Authority, Peoria Passenger Rail Leadership Team, Census 2020 Committee, Peoria Public Schools Joint Committee, Chairperson for the City of Peoria Memorial Day Celebrations, Landlord Working Group, among many others. He was very active throughout the community and with many organizations as the Alignment Peoria Governing Board, Peoria Riverfront Museum, the Order of St. Francis Health Systems Advisory Board, and the Heart of Illinois United Way, just to name a few. His dedication to the community and its citizens was insurmountable. Now, therefore, be it resolved that this City Council, on behalf of its members, the officials and employees of the City of Peoria, and the citizens of the community, do hereby express to Sid Ruckregal a sincere and profound appreciation and thanks for his years of dedicated service as a Peoria City Council Member. Be it further resolved that Honorable Sid P. Ruckregal be presented this resolution and this resolution be spread upon the permanent record of the City of Peoria, Illinois, attested to by the city clerk, passed by the City Council of Peoria, Illinois, the second day of May 2023. Thank you for your service, Councilmember. And a little momento for you, Peoria City Hall.
Great. Thank you. All yours.
Thank you, Mayor Ali. And what an honor it has been to be able to serve with you, and thank you for all of your leadership during the past two years. First off, I'd like to thank everybody who came out tonight because this is probably, of all of the City Council meetings, what I feel is probably the most important City Council meeting of any timeframe. Because it is here, at this local level and at this meeting, where we actually are able to show what democracy is about. It doesn't happen everywhere. It doesn't happen in many countries. But this is where councils who are stepping off and councils that are stepping on actually come together and you see the transition come through. So thank you for taking time out to be here at this important meeting. I'd also like to thank my family, who have always supported me in, in my endeavors, not only on City Council, but on my service to Peoria, but also my friends, many of which are here today. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Representative Leach. You were one of the first calls that I made when I thought about being able to place my name in the hopper for the opening for At-Large City Council Member, and thank you for your advice. It was, it was well received, and, and getting that from somebody that I respected laid the groundwork for my next seven and a half years. Thank you, Linda Daly, for all of your support. And the Honorable Jim Artis and his wife, Mimi, thank you for placing my name in that hopper, but also more for your friendship and for your leadership and for your vision for what Peoria can be. You may have sat right here, but the effect and the glow that you put out through the councils and the meetings that we had was effective and it helped bring us together. Thank you very much. And Sally Snyder, I think I owe you a couple of pair of shoes for all of the miles you walked. And Stephen, Joy, Bobby, thank you for being there from day one and to be able to see us grow as, as friends and to be able to find where that first photo was and to see us grow in years as well has been great. Sister Julie, thank you for your consistent friendship. I truly appreciate the council that I serve on, and thank you to each and every member because, and many like to say, "Well, you don't always agree." That's the great thing of a council, because you're not supposed to all have the same opinion or same ideas or same background. Each and every one of us bring a skill set to this horseshoe, and each one of us adds value in that way. Thank you each, to each of you for taking the time to be able to express your opinions, to be able to have those conversations, and for us to find commonality which always brought us together. And I think it's perfect timing that there was a story in the media where they looked back at a council 50 years ago and the effect that that council had. And they looked at the things that at that time were maybe just considered normal council work, but we built a community 50 years later, and we see the results of those things. And I look back at our time for those seven and a half years, and I truly feel that there have been some great accomplishments that will be the foundation as we go forward. When I ran at my first election, I had three things that I was really running on. One was to make sure that we had the financial backing and the support to build our business community within the city of Peoria, because that is where the future lies for jobs, for economic improvement for all of our citizens. Second was to be able to make for sure that we were putting dollars back into the things that were true public service. And one of those considerations that I talked on very much so were roads and the condition of the roads that we had, because of economic conditions that were placed in front of us, had to scale back prior to that. And the third area was investments in our neighborhoods. Well, I'm glad to say that looking back over the past seven and a half years, and if we compare that time to where we are now, we see that there are significant more dollars that are being placed in each and every year into road preservation, road replacement, and repairing the roads that we, as a community, drive on each and every day. And it's great because it's not just in one district, because you know, travelers of our city travel throughout the whole city, and they use all of our roads, and it's something that actually binds us. But we also have set a financial plan and a foundation for our city. We've been able to re, put those reserves back into line into our own policy and be able to have that cash to be able to do things within our community investments in areas where we haven't had that before. We've been able to see this city through a pandemic, the likes of which our country hasn't seen since the early 1900s, and we did it together. We also have put more investment and more resources in all of the effects to our community, whether that be community development, code enforcement, into our economic empowerment to be able to grow and bring businesses to our area, for our fire and our police. Our resources have never been stronger, and I think that is something to be proud of. And we have also found partnerships in ways that probably previous did not exist to the extent they did. And if I look at our partnership with the county, there are a couple of great things that really stand out. If there was ever an important census, this was a census that was so important to the city of Peoria's future. And it was through that census that the city and the county actually partnered for the first time to be able to form a census committee through the, through the Racial Justice Commission, together, was passed unanimously, 100% by the full council and the full county board at a meeting together where they jointly could do that together. That says a lot about our community. I'm so proud to be called a Peorian, not because I was born here, but because this city doesn't require you to be born here to be a Peorian. It loves and welcomes and is a conduit for all of its citizens, and I am proud to be a Peorian. I won't, I won't belabor my comments because I think the people you really want to hear from tonight are new council leaders, and I just want to be able to say to them, "Thank you for stepping up to the challenge. I look forward to what you do with the work that we have laid in the foundation and where you carry that forward and the new work that we have not been able to start and you will be able to do as well." Thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for supporting this council, and best wishes.
We have one last item for this council, and it's 23-156, a consideration of a motion to approve the resolutions commending outgoing elected officials and to direct the city clerk to spread the resolutions upon the permanent record.
Moved by Councilmember Rigenbach, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. A move by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Ruckregal. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes. Uh, Jensen. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the lights go on. I'm sorry. We do have some comments from the council. Can you turn your lights on? We have a motion on the floor and a second. Before we vote, we have some comments from the floor. Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'll start with my colleague to the right, or left of me here, the, the Lady of Moss Avenue, Councilwoman Jensen. It's been a pleasure to sit next to you for the last six years. We've now, I think, probably successfully irritated two mayors with our chatter back and forth on, on items throughout the meeting and deliberating on issues. We've had the opportunity to work together on many issues over that six years, and I value your leadership and your ability to help us understand the legal perspective on things and help push us to collaboratively have public input on issues. I appreciate the, the fact that we've been able to trade barbs with each other at times when we disagree on issues and still have a positive working relationship. And even at a, a time in society where differing political parties don't work together, we've had fundraisers in the past together and supported each other in past elections, and I appreciate that relationship that you've, you've given to the council and your public service to the entire city of Peoria, especially the historic neighborhoods. And even when we've disagreed on some of the challenges in the city and how to solve them, your resolve to ensure that we are a better city is greatly appreciated and will sorely be missed. Now to the gentleman from Moss Avenue to my right. My dear friend, Councilman Ruckregal, it, it has been a pleasure to take so many steps with you along this journey from putting in for an appointment together seven years ago to being elected together six years ago, elected again together four years ago, taking trips together, more dinners and drinks than I can count, being one of my closest confidants. I truly can't express to you how important your leadership in this community has been and how much you mean to me as a friend. I look forward to continuing to work on, on the challenges in the city with you. I hope that you will be one phone call away as we continue to move forward in the city of Peoria, and we can't do it without you. And I greatly respect everything that you've contributed, and you have been a monumental force on this council, and we will desperately miss your leadership and guidance. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you. And it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. It's been an honor and a privilege to learn from you. You were here before I was. You helped me to learn much of what I know today, so I, I respect you both and I appreciate serving with you, and I wish you well. I, I know you're not going too far. Thank you very much. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we're going to take a brief intermission, 10 minutes. That concludes the first part of our meeting. I will take a 10-minute inter, intermission while staff prepares the room for the incoming council. And guests are invited to stay if you choose for the remainder of the meeting, and the meeting will resume again 10 minutes. Thank you. Cheers.[1695.62] Everyone, would please take your seats. We're about to reconvene, please. Thank you. Please take your seats. We're going to reconvene. Thank you. Attention, everyone. Please take your seats. We're going to get started. At-large council members, can you please come to my right? Thank you. All at-large council members, please come to my right. I'm going to turn this part of the program over to our Madam Clerk, Stephanie Tar.
Thank you. At this portion of the meeting, we are going to swear in our new elects. So if you could please come forward, Bernice Gordon Young. Do you have two people you would like to have? Could you invite them up, please? Okay. I'll need you to repeat after me and make sure you repeat loudly so they can hear you in the mic. Okay? Please raise your right hand. I, Bernice Gordon Young.
I, Bernice Gordon Young.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Councilmember-at-large.
Of Councilmember-at-large.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
And Town Trustee.
And Town Trustee.
By virtue of the office.
By virtue of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Great. Congratulations. Next, I have up John Kelly. Now, if you could speak up loudly and so the mic can hear you, okay? Please raise your right hands.
I, John Kelly.
I, John Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Councilmember-at-large.
Of Councilmember-at-large.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
And Town Trustee.
And Town Trustee.
By virtue of the office.
By virtue of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Next, I have Zach Euler. Do you have two people? No? Okay. Make sure you speak.
I, Zach- Zachary Euler.
I, Zachary M. Euler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Councilmember-at-large.
Of Councilmember-at-large.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Town Trustee by virtue of the office.
Town Trustee by virtue of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Next, I have Kiran Valpula. Do you have two people you would like to have with you? I need you to speak loudly so the mic can hear you, okay? All right. Please raise your right hand. I, Kiran Valpula.
I, Kiran Valpula.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Councilmember-at-large.
Of Councilmember-at-large.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Town Trustee.
Town Trustee.
By the virtue of the office.
By the virtue of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Great. Congratulations. Mike Vespa, if you could come up, please? Do you have two people?
Right there.
Perfect. All right. It's, okay. If you could write, use your right hand, please, and speak loudly so the mic can hear you. I, Mike Vespa.
I, Mike Vespa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Councilmember-at-large.
Of Councilmember-at-large.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Town Trustee by virtue of the office.
Town Trustee by virtue of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We will now convene the meeting of the new City Peoria Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have remarks by our newly elected and newly re-elected at-large council members, and we're going to go in the same order that they were sworn in. So Councilmember Gordon Young. So Councilmember Gordon Young, welcome.
It is not lost on me that sitting in this seat is an honor and a privilege. And there's so many people that I want to thank, but I first have to thank God. I thank my parents, my mother who I'm watching, who raised me to know that life is bigger than me and to make a difference everywhere you go, and it's simply through just being kind. One of the things that she said to me as a young girl, actually a broke college student, was wealth is measured by what's in your heart, not what's in your pocket. My late father, who was a problem solver, said to me, problems you solve, situations you deal with, figure out which one you have and take action. My sister, my oldest sister, who has always taught me to never just sit with only your friends or the people you came with, reach out, get to know other people, create a diverse environment, and that will bring you wealth as well. To my late sister, who was so proud of me, she sits here on my shoulder as my father, and I can just see her smiling down saying, "I'm proud of you sis." My daughter, whom I was a teenage mother, you know, and so everything that I did, I did it trying to make her proud by serving as an example to not just her, but to other young ladies who perhaps went down the same road I did. To my mother-in-law, who is so supportive and shows up to everything and really worked hard on this campaign. To my campaign manager, Alex Sierra, who was the only one who had any amount of experience on this team, I thank you. To, and I'm not going to name everybody because I'll miss somebody, but the ones that I see before me, I definitely want to tell you, I appreciate you. To, and I can't say enough about my brother Anthony, who is, we're so close, and this is not my brother through blood, but this is my brother, my late sister's ex-boyfriend, boyfriend if you will, right? He named my daughter, that's how much he means to me, and anytime I call him, he's coming, and I thank you. To my niece, who came to every campaign event and with no attitude, because she's a business owner and she had a lot of work to do, and she always found time, I appreciate you. To Tim Drew, who many years ago, as my professor, said to me, "You can do this." And when I was working on my PhD, he said, "You will finish if you don't quit." And that just resonated in me. And I did not mention my husband yet because he has been the MVP. He's been the MVP. I am such a, I call it productive versus busy person. And for, you know, rolling off of a PhD, eight years of that, and I came home two weeks after finishing, and I said, "I think I'm going to run for city council. What do you think?" And he said, "Okay, if that's what you want to do," you know? And so with all the things that I do in this community, you know, whether it's it takes a village, or whatever it is, whatever board I'm on, he's always been supportive. Where are you at? Please stand up. My daughter, I want you guys to stand up. I mean, I could bring a loaf of bread home, and he's, you know, he'll hesitate before he opens it because he doesn't know if I'm going to give it to somebody, you know? Because we're all, we're just a family of giving. And I'm very grateful to have not only the support of my family, but a strong campaign team, you know, that were seen and unseen, the strategists that did all that they could. We were a small team, but a mighty team, and everyone was committed to the mission. And that mission was that we improve and stand on the backs and the shoulders of those who have already made a way and paved a way. It is not lost on me that I stand on the shoulders of some great people, and I will never forget that. I want to thank the citizens of Peoria for believing in me, and not only believing in me, but advocating for me. And certainly, you know, not last or least, but Madam Mayor, I'm honored to work with you and I'm committed to working with you. To my new colleagues, I am honored to work with you and I'm committed to working with all of you. To the citizens of Peoria, I am humbled and I'm committed to moving Peoria forward. Thank you.
Councilmember John Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to begin by thanking Sid Rockregel and Beth Jensen for their service here. They were always very, very good to me. And we got along well. One of the marks of this council is that we have great collegiality here, regardless of the issues, regardless of where we stand. And those two really, really personified that, and I know they're not here right now. I thought they would be here, but I would like to thank them for all that they've done. I would like to commend our two new council members, Bernice Gordon Young and Mike Vespa. You have big shoes to fill, but I've met with both of you, have enjoyed our talks together. I don't really have any lack of confidence in you being able to fill those shoes. God bless you and good luck. Speaking of God, I'd like to thank Him too. He's been rather helpful to me in my life, and I am so grateful to Him for all the wonderful, wonderful things He has put in my way, including this. I look back on my life a little bit, and I think, you know, I did this well, I did this poorly, I did something else, et cetera, et cetera. And I look at myself today and I think, you know, all those things made me who I am and put me in this chair, and I am so, so grateful. Of course, I would like to thank the voters of Peoria for electing me again. I am very grateful and very humbled, and I want to do as good a job as I possibly can to make our city a great place. And I'd also like to thank those organizations that sponsored candidate forums, et cetera, allowed us to get up there and sometimes act like Elmer Fudd, but in general, got our point across. I always enjoyed it because the points I put forward were oftentimes a little different than others, and, but I want to thank them. The incumbent council people, I'd also like to thank for your support, your camaraderie, your wisdom. I think we've done a good job together. I'm sorry, not just council members, but the mayor as well. We have pushed through some difficult issues and whatnot, and we can all recall a few that it's taken us months and months and months to resolve, but we've resolved them and we stand behind them, and it's, I think, a wonderful tribute to the incumbent members here. Also, I'd like to thank our city manager. Just a side point, my dad passed away two years ago, and when he was a bit younger, back in the 1950s, he was the president of Peorians for Council Manager Government. And they won, obviously. And so I keep asking the manager every now and then, I said, "You know, you make pretty good money, and I think it's my dad's doing, you know, can you spare a little of that?" But he just laughs. But more seriously, the manager runs, has terrific department heads, I think, and they're very responsive, but I think they do a very, very good job, and that speaks well of the staff in general as well, and I thank them for making us look good. Sometimes it's deserved, sometimes it's not, but, and let me see, is there anyone else I should thank? Oh, yes. I would like to thank my wife Amy. Some of you know, some of you don't. Amy and I were having a discussion one day, and in the profession I had, I wasn't allowed to hold public office. And I was maybe complaining about something, I don't know, and she said, "John, why don't you retire and run?" And I had really never thought about that before, and it took me a long time, like two minutes, to say, "Yeah, why don't I do that?" And so, but Amy has just, she's been my sounding board, my, you know, we talk about the issues, we go back and forth, she gives me advice, and she gives me her own love, and God bless you, Amy. So thank you all. God bless you all. Please pray for all of us. Thank you.
Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. How quickly things change. Six years ago, at 32-years-old, I took this seat, and I really, at that time, didn't think that six years later, I'd be the most senior citywide elected in this body and the third longest-serving member of the council behind my colleagues, Councilman Rigenbach and Grab. I appreciate your leadership and support that you give to us and the guidance that you show, and it's been quite a ride over six years through monumental challenges personally and around this horseshoe as a governing body, the things that we've worked through and fought through to try and accomplish, that the citizens of the great city of Peoria decided to give me a third term in this office, in this chair, four more years. And I appreciate all of the help and support that everyone gives me, especially my friends and family and the folks in front of me right here that are constantly there behind me when I have to work through many challenges, day-to-day serving and public service. It's not what happens in this room that really makes an elected official, it's everything we do outside of this room. It's responding to constituent calls, it's solving community challenges, it's growing our economy, it's bringing jobs and businesses to this community, it's being the person at the table to help drive this community forward, that's what this job is about. And sitting behind this desk, pushing my light on Tuesday nights, is just a very small piece of what this job is. And to my two new colleagues that'll be joining us, there's long nights, challenging days, it can be a very grueling yet rewarding job to sit in one of these chairs. The expectations are high, the need is great, and there is much work to be done. I thank the citizens of Peoria for their continued support of me, for giving me another term in this chair to serve you. I've always believed that I serve something higher than myself in serving the citizens of the City of Peoria, and I think that giving me another term in this chair has shown that they believe and trust in that, that I will continue to fight for our economy, for our citizens, our neighborhoods, growing our jobs, and making sure that this is the best place to live in the country. God bless the City of Peoria. Thank you.
Councilmember Velpula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was just two years ago that I took the oath of office right here, in this very place, to become then an at-large councilman. Thanks to you, Madam Mayor, and all the council that made my dream possible, and here I am again. While the first time was wonderful, tonight is very special. Actually, it is more than that. It's quite awesome. That's because I stand before you, having been chosen by the voters, to represent them for a full term. Tonight, I stand before you all as an immigrant who was instilled with values that believed in the power of education to build a quality life. I thank my parents for that. I also stand before you all as a healthcare professional who chose Peoria as a place to further my career, raise my family, and to work and to improve the community. Finally, I stand before you as someone with a deep-seated, passionate desire to improve the city, to make this city a biotech hub, to improve educational opportunities for all Peorians. I've come a long way since I first arrived in this amazing city. As I said, it was an amazing feeling, and I stand before you tonight, ready to work with all of you seated around this horseshoe, every single one of you, to make Peoria a better place. I'll serve as a member of the council, as Iran, working with everyone, regardless of where you are from, where you work, race, gender, and political party. Let's use our differences to bring us together to improve Peoria rather than divide. My colleagues on the council, we may not always agree on the methods, but I know everyone here, deep in their hearts, want the same things, more job opportunities that support small businesses, better schools, safe streets, and neighborhoods. These issues are all interrelated, and we can't thrive by addressing any without you all. My fellow Peorians, thank you from the bottom of my heart for the chance to represent you. It is indeed an honor. Public service, to me, is a sacred trust, and I'll do my very best every day to continue to earn your support and trust. I wanted to thank my team, my mentors, my family, friends, and there are several people in the council today. I wanted to name them. I wanted to start with Faisal, Naushin, Abbas, Rashmi, Franklin, Uday Bhaskar, Uday Gandam, Samita, Gopi, Jigar, Priti, Priti Sareen, Harish, and Prashant Ankl. I wouldn't have survived this journey if I wouldn't have had them in my life. And one final word of thanks to my wife and son, who endured my absence a lot during my campaign. It was grueling. I love them dearly, and they are my true heroes. Thank you all.
Finally, Councilmember Vespa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone who's here. I'd like to thank God and my family, every supporter that's been behind me, certainly I couldn't, I couldn't name them all here, and I'm not going to try, but I'll just try to, you know, try to mention at least the ones that are still here. And I certainly would lead off with my dad, Joe, who I think you all just met. He, you know, he was the son of a caterpillar welder with an eighth-grade education, went to law school, became a judge, served as a judge for 18 years. And his brother John was also here, you just met. That's two judges who came from a, you know, a family supported by a caterpillar welder income. That's something that, you know, doesn't happen everywhere. So I really stand on the shoulder of giants, and, you know, the common thread throughout my family is integrity. You know, certainly people who are judges have a certain standard, you know, code that they have to abide by. As a lawyer, I do too. I, you know, we all have professional ethics. But you talk about standing on the shoulders of giants, you couldn't pick any better ones. But... Huge trailblazer, really, you know, a giant for Peoria, not just our family. And she followed in the footsteps of my mom, Kay Vespa, formerly Kay Hartzell, who was the first full-time news anchor here in Peoria in the 80s. So, I mean, I am incredibly blessed to come from such a great family, and I mean, it's a huge blessing, but it's also incredible responsibility for me to have to live up to, you know, the character that they've shown in coming before me. So, anyway, I, you know, this is the honor of my life. I love Peoria, I was born here, I went to college here, and I don't see myself leaving. And I will work hard. I worked really hard on the campaign trail. I needed to take time off afterward, a few days off, but I'm, you know, I'm recuperated, and I'm ready to get back out there. I had a great time meeting the citizens of Peoria. I met well over 1,000 people, knocked on probably close to 2,000 doors, and so I think I have a good feel in the pulse of the city. But it's a good community, it's a really good community with a lot of potential. And, you know, we have a responsibility to help it reach its potential. So I'm looking forward to that. And I also want to say, we have a great staff here. Certainly, I've met them, I have a lot of faith in them, I have a lot of faith in my colleagues here, too. We're lucky to be here, and the next two years should be a lot of fun. So let's get to work. Thanks.
(applause) I want to thank and congratulate all of our newly-elected and re-elected councilmembers. I had the privilege and honor yesterday of joining the 50th anniversary of the 1973 City Council. They've been together celebrating every five years. They were elected in 1973 together, and they maintained a bond for many years. There wasn't 11 of them, there was nine of them. There was the mayor and eight councilmembers. And only four of them are still living, Mr. Les Bergston, Mr. Bruce Brown, Mr. Jim Bateman, and then Mayor Dick Carver. Mayor Dick Carver wasn't able to make it yesterday, he's, it's in Florida. But they had a long list of the things that they accomplished over the years that they worked together, and it was a lot. I mean, even establishing the Civic Center was one of those huge accomplishments. And there were many, many more accomplishments. I think establishing the first, one of the first equal employment opportunity offices in the nation, but a long list of accomplishments. And I asked, in conversation with them, what made them so successful as a council, working together? And they said it was their, the fact that they did not look at their differences, but they looked at what they had in common, and that was Peoria. They kept their eyes on the prize. They looked at what they, their goals, their common goals, and they worked together, they got to know one another, they built their relationships, they began to trust one another. And trust is really important. Getting to know one another and building our relationships are really important. So I just want to encourage us to come together in a bond, bonding relationship, keeping our eyes on the prize, and working together as a team so that we can achieve some of the same heights that the 1973 team achieved. So I'm excited, I'm optimistic, and I look forward to working with the new council. Congratulations. (applause) Madam Clerk.
We have two items for the new council. 23-157 is a communication from the Mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Madam Clerk, do you need to call the names?
We need a voice vote from Councilmember Gordon Young and Councilmember Vespa.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at item number 23-158, and it is the distribution of council rules, which those who have been distributed previously on your desk, you all should have a copy. And I believe Corporation Council Hayes will have a comment on that.
Corporation Council Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The council rules provide that within the first 90 days of a newly-established city council, they can amend the council rules. So a copy of the council rules has been provided to each of you in hard copy today, and we'd welcome your input on any adjustments to those rules. There have been some changes that have been suggested already, and those are reflected in a red line. And we can establish either a date to move on the rules or a policy session at the direction of council, if you've had some time to consider those matters. In addition, we've added to your packet today the civility pledge that the Illinois Municipal League Board has adopted and suggested for municipalities throughout Illinois. Our mayor is a member of that board of directors, and I don't know if you have any other comments, Your Honor, on that, but we'd ask you to consider the memo, and please feel welcome to share comments or suggested rule changes to me, and then we'll determine how we proceed as far as adoption of adjusted rules. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions for Corporation Council? Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Move to receive and file.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Madam Clerk, you want to get a verbal vote?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Gordon Young and Councilmember Vespa.
Great. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Did you receive any cards?
No, we have not.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay. Then we are at the benediction by Monsignor Jason Gray.
I would invite Monsignor Jason Gray to the podium. He is the apostle, he's from the St. Thomas, the Apostle Catholic Church, Peoria Heights, where he's the pastor.
And on behalf of Bishop Louis Tilka and all of the Catholics in the city of Peoria, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be with you, especially on this important day. May I ask you to join me in prayer? Almighty God, pour out your blessings on those who serve on this council. Grant them wisdom in their deliberations, prudence in their judgment, and humility in their example as they work for the good of our city. It is a privilege to serve the needs of others, and especially those in greatest need. May they always remember this truth. With kindness and respect for their fellow members and for the people of this community, may they be persons of integrity, models of courage, and leaders in charity. With your help, may every member of our Peorian family be blessed with prosperity and peace. And I make this prayer through Christ our Lord.
Thank you, Pastor. Before we adjourn, I want to ask the councilmembers, the newly-elected, especially and re-elected, to stick around for photos, and I think we're all going to take a photo, too, everybody. And so I want to get a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots.
Councilmember Gordon Young and Councilmember Vespa.
Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. (applause) (end of transcript)